Some levels, we're all terrified. Because you want to do the right thing, you don't want to screw it up. And you want more, but is is it's less enough? I I don't know. I mean, we don't want to do this. We don't want to kill the good for the in pursuit of the perfect. That's my fear. So we have, let's, can we, is there another comment here? Alright, so so let's let's talk about the wording on this on this.
Resolution?
This this piece of poetry we put together. And 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 maybe we should consider adding Harbor Heights to it.
Harbor Heights is already part of it.
Okay.
So so let me, okay. No.
Original Scott.
Part of the resolution that is before the board.
Alright.
That is published in the, it was revised today and it's on the website.
We want to give them something we can all agree on. Okay. We're not all going to get what we want. This is something we could all agree about. Right? Alright, so.
So the resolution that's.
Can we get it up on the on the on the thing here or?
We give Augie the final version?
No, we didn't. No, that's the shit that you don't have the final version.
Final version is on the agenda. Where would you see? I attached it.
No, I understand that, but.
We've been fiddling with it.
Fiddling with it, and so.
Well, before.
If you bear with me.
Yeah, before Jerry departed, he said, there's too many changes. You need another meeting to finalize it.
No, we don't.
Let's just get it done.
Yeah.
Excuse me. We're going to get through this one way or another tonight. Okay? Per Victor's suggestion, we want to start.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry about that.
Sorry, Maria, your your hand was small.
It's really small.
Can we bring her in? Augie?
I'm muted, so she can speak.
Okay.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Hello, Maria.
Hi, how are you?
I hope you have a brief comment.
I do. I I certainly do. Um, I just about tweaking the Army Corps project. Lou, I know you were here many years ago to cover the flooding. I've been a lifelong resident of Mamaronek, so I've lived it. All these years. Lucky you, at that time, you were able to just come in, do the story and leave. We were left to deal with it. We were left to deal with it again and again and again.
I know.
When the Army Corps came in. It was a tremendous relief to everyone when they decided they wanted to help us. But many years have passed since they have done their survey and we all know that and we know it wasn't going to be perfect from the beginning and no one wants to stalead, no one wants to start from scratch, no one wants to risk losing it. But they are aware of the fact that a lot of time has passed and Ida caused a whole new level of havoc.
I can't edit it. I'm trying to.
If if they are asking for tweaks. We are go, oh, I'm sorry. Let me preface by saying that I am a current member of the Ethics Board and a former member of the FMAC, but I am speaking as a resident.
Okay, alright. They they haven't asked, it's been suggested that it that would be something for us to do. They can say yes or no.
Yes, they they have suggested they would entertain tweaks.
Yes.
Uh. They're asking for four, to look at four, and we're not going beyond the scope of the Mamaronek, all the Sheldon Drake rivers with the four that we're proposing. When I was on FMAC, we had a laundry list of things we wanted them to look at. To get it narrowed down to four is a huge concession on the village's part. We are not demanding.
Where did that number come from? Where did four come from? Okay, alright.
But but we're not demanding, we're respectfully requesting that they look at it.
Understood.
We're not telling them that that they have to say yes. They can say no, but if we don't send it to them, then we're not doing our due diligence. And I think we're wasting a lot of time going back and forth. Just send it. Let them look at it. If they can make the project better with these tweaks, allow.
We have to, we have to write it before we can send it. So we're doing that now. We're working on it.
Okay. And did I hear you correctly? Beaver Swamp Brook isn't getting judged till next year?
Oh, no, no. We're judging it this year and next year.
Ah, you're the best.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and one more thing. I'm sorry, Dan, while I have you there, Dan Sarnoff, about your robo-call. When that mosquito truck comes out of Castle Court tomorrow, can it face the other way because we're getting killed on this side of the parkway by mosquitoes?
What was that?
She 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 wants, she wants mosquito spray.
Yeah, when that truck comes out of Castle Court at four o'clock in the morning. Can you just aim it towards this side of the parkway? Because this side is no better than the Castle Court side with mosquitoes.
Well, that's Jerry. He's already gone.
Yeah, you know, we know, but I think we, it's on, they're going to be in the parkway.
Yeah, you guys are doing five oh, two to five twenty-something. That has, that's all the way down the other side from Castleport. That's not this side of the parkway, your Shore Reapers Drive. Beaver Swamp Brook, swamp being the key element. That's where mosquitoes live. I picked a pepper from my garden today. I look like a leper.
Forward the press, but I don't know what.
Okay. Thank you.
So. I I'm not trying to.
Well, don't, don't.
So this is, so take.
Alright, um.
Take B.
This isn't A. I'm not sure if rewriting it now, the the. Something that we should have done in the work session or?
No, I mean, we we started it in the work session. It's fine. I mean, we can do this. I think I I think I think I did it.
You think you did it?
I think I did it.
Okay.
Want to look?
Yeah, let's take a look. We got, now we got two.
I can't set it up on my screen.
We get rid of three? Get rid of three, Dan? What? Are we getting rid of three? No.
I think this is what, but I'm not sure.
It will become D.
Whereas.
How do you have this actually?
Some discretion. Plan to look at potential.
I put, so that. They are seeing work with the village.
Yeah.
And then this. I don't, then show it to me.
I am.
I got a feeling he's going to.
Well, I wasn't, didn't hear what you guys said.
He said, I changed it to.
Please don't take that away from me. I'm not taking. I'm visually challenged. My host disappeared. D. Question mark. And the first one is E. E. What else? So. B, A is, B becomes A. Got that? Okay. A becomes B. Got that? Okay. Three becomes C. D and E. Hold on.
Alright, now let me see it.
We put the word respectfully in.
Okay. First believed that the ace is doing just in discretion. Of the plan, limiting them without delaying plans with it, the first that, but, well, the village of Merrick, which he strictly reports the ace, which I said. Without looking potentially significant. Potentially, how about significant improvements? I don't know. This is looking at potentially significantly improving the plan. To look at some, to to consider some changes through tweaking the plan.
On the screen, yeah.
Should I put this up and edit it as everybody sees?
Yeah, yeah. Let's let's not, let's not characterize what we're asking to do, like.
He will push the button. He just have to push the button.
Okay.
Dan, I know you're frustrated. You want it to be stronger, but but I think it's got to be very neutral. And I gotta, and I gotta talk to Tom when he gets back, so. Okay, the days engineer has some discretion with the plan to make tweaks to improve effectiveness. That's labor, compromise. Now be resolved, the village of Merrick, or to she's respectfully request, the ace, that the language applies existing funding plan. Consider the following changes. Let's 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 just, that's it.
We'll get to the.
Yeah, yeah, look into this. That's it. Just, that's it. Just.
No, 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 because what you're asking for is to look into these and anything and other things that you come up with.
Okay, 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 okay. Yeah, okay, to look at, to look at, look at, uh, consider changes that could improve the, okay, to look at potentially. See, potentially significantly improving the plan to reduce flooding.
You asked, you wanted?
Just, the wording is just, just got my, twisting my head on.
This is what we agreed on.
Without the layers. To look at potentially significant changes to reduce flooding through tweaking, okay? Not the following, but not limited to, you know, I mean, I just.
Tweaking the plan.
It's just too many words in it, Dan, that's all.
Doubt of.
I mean, these are the words that were there. How about tweaking the plan?
What? What, what, what's wrong? That's what I don't understand.
To look at, it it just, first of all, I I it's a little awkwardly word, word, without delaying or jeopardizing the existing funding plan. To look at potential changes to reduce flooding, particularly.
Use the word tweaks.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, so to look at potential changes, let's let's get, let's get significantly improving the plan. Because what we're saying is that their plan is inadequate.
But they use the word tweak.
Okay, it's fine, it's fine. To to to, through tweaking, changes through tweaking. So it's, so it's.
Where are you?
Okay, now be it resolved that the village of Mamaronek, or to she's respectfully request the ace without the language that would ever exist. But first of all, it's fine. To look at potentially changing the plan.
No, you want, you don't want to change it. You want to improve it. You 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 don't want to change the plan. That that's where you're going wrong.
Okay, alter to significantly to to. To tweak.
No, it's up higher.
To tweak the plan to reduce.
Augie, we're on the, we're we're above A, we're the paragraph above A.
Okay.
Right there.
Alright. Close here. Look at potentially.
The third line.
Oh, but.
Make the changes? Next paragraph?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Right, right where your cursor is. Okay, right there.
Look at.
Significantly improving, take out potential. Look at. Yeah, potentially. That's okay. That's one word.
Yeah, I.
Significantly improving the plan.
Potentially improving the plan, just take significantly out. Can you take significantly out?
Significant, yeah.
Potentially. And leave significantly in.
Yeah.
Dan, you have a. That's fine.
Which word?
Take, take, where it says, look at potentially, take potentially out.
I would take them both now, but.
No, we're looking.
Proven quite a reduced flooding, particularly in episodic storms through tweaking the plan, through limited to. Alright, I don't love that significantly there is there. I think that 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 the means their plan, but you want to leave it. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna die on that hill. Okay, the next step, change design of the of the of the covered coal. Consider changing the design.
Yeah, consider.
To consider changing, yeah. A, consider changing the design. Right after A.
Which, before the word change, put in consider. I'll agree to that.
Changing the design. Of the covered culvert from the Jefferson Avenue Bridge, the railroad bridge.
What happened?
Oh, no. Where'd it go?
Okay, that's, that's where we are.
I'm gonna have to give you two cigars later, Augie. By daylighting the culvert from a tunnel to, which is, which which could be susceptible to clogging, right?
We'll talk. It's, it is.
It is susceptible.
Well, so is it, so is a frigging culvert.
What? But you can get to it open, the daylighting, so you can get to fix it.
Which is possibly susceptible to clogging? Okay, alright. You you're making judgments in it, and I don't think, I don't think it's helpful. Clog with limited, with limited ability to research block. Okay, there you go. Potentially lowering the surrounding parking area created for flood risk water retention basis. Now, that's something that when when it came up, you said that that the village might have to do itself.
This is your green question.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's what that is.
Take it down like you did the Center Avenue.
Okay, keep, keep going.
Everybody get back here. We'll all, we'll all, we'll do it together.
Go to B.
Seeking to remove or reduce the construction caused by Metropolitan Transit Authority's road bridge. As well as. That's fine, that's fine. Okay. Now, this taking monies for the replacement of Waverly, or consider taking monies.
That's money that was budgeted that's not being needed because it's being done by the town.
So you want to hear, so you want to say, consider taking monies?
So leave C in there. So that's officially, that's officially notifying them.
Right.
That that there's monies available that they're not aware of.
Got it, got it, got it.
Okay, go to D.
D?
Augie, go to D.
Work with the village during the design phases of other potential tweaks, including but not limited to reallocating monies to elevate six open Harbor High.
Six slash eight homes in Harbor Heights.
Okay, go.
Take the number out.
No, no, because the original plan, Lou called for six to eight.
Yeah, yeah, but take it out to elevate homes at Harbor Heights. Why, what, what's again, just take it out, take the number out.
I wouldn't, because that was their original plan and we're.
Yeah, I know, but we're not, we, we. They may, you know what? They know plane may, it may have fifteen houses. We don't know.
But the original plan, so I'm saying.
Let's just, let's just elevate home.
Augie, what are you doing?
He's he's just, just, I would say, take out to elevate homes at Harbor Heights for effective cost benefits, just channelizing river. The the river. Please take out the number.
I think we should leave the number.
I I think what we should leave it in, that's one of the reasons I wanted to whereas, because you've gone from five to twenty-one.
Okay, alright, alright.
So put a slash after six.
Alright, alright, fine, fine.
And put, put the number eight in.
Channelizing. Take it out.
No, leave it in.
Just, just hold.
Like that? Dash slash.
No, 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 no.
Fine. Go to E. Let's, let's go to, let's go to E.
Alright, tell the river, and you don't have to, you don't have to put Harbor Heights because it's obviously Harbor Heights. That's redundant. Excuse me, the board is deliberating. The board is deliberating, please. Alright?
That's the only place they're suggesting.
Please, please.
I think.
I thought there was public comment.
We should leave Harbor Heights in.
Okay, alright.
I think this is wonderful.
Alright, alright, I I think, I think Harbor Heights is redundant there. So, but channelizing the river. I mean, why in Harbor?
They're channelizing the river in other places. They are channelizing the river in other places. They're not channelizing.
Or maybe, maybe channelize.
In this current plan.
Have a high-level work session meeting with the village of Board of Merrick's Board of Trustees, including other stakeholders, if, if the ace believes desirable, with the village of Merrick's. Alright, that's fine. What?
No, I just, I mean, I, do we want to read it out loud?
Victor, are you?
Okay, I'll read it out loud. I'll read it out loud.
Victor's going, okay, Victor's, Victor's good with it.
Okay, I'll, folks, I'm gonna read this out loud.
Quiet, please.
Hello, please, guys. I'm gonna read this out loud. This is what we're gonna, this is what we're gonna vote on. Whereas it is believed that the ace's engineer has some discretion with the plan to make tweaks to improve the effectiveness of the plan without delaying the plan's implementation or compromising the approved funding. Now be it resolved that the village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees respectfully requests the ace without delaying or jeopardizing the existing funding of the plan to look at significantly improving the plan to reduce flooding, particularly in episodic storms through tweaking the plan through but not limited to. Consider changing the design of the covered culvert from Jefferson Avenue Bridge to the railroad bridge and surrounding area by daylighting the culvert from a tunnel, which is susceptible to clogging, with limited, if any, ability of the village of Mamaronek to free such clogging. Two, potentially lowering in the surrounding parking lot area to create a greater floodwater retention basin. Next, seeking to remove or reduce the constriction caused by the Metropolitan Transit Authority's railroad bridge, as well as the immediately adjacent Westchester County Halsted Avenue Bridge and the intermediate below-water stone dam. Taking money scheduled for the replacement of the Waverly Avenue Bridge as it is being undertaken. Taking, taken, that's that's grammatically incorrect. We should be E N. Undertaken, right?
Undertaken. Yeah, you're right.
Undertaken, right, right. Undertaken.
You're taken.
Undersee, second line.
That's undersea, undersea, Augie.
Right, but undertaken.
Yeah. T A K E N.
Okay, undertaken by the town of Mamaronek and using those monies in part to study and or implement the above. Work with the village during the design phase of other potential tweaks, including but not limited to reallocating monies to elevate six slash eight homes in Harbor Heights for more effective cost benefits, such as channelizing the river in Harbor Heights. And Harbor Heights is not capitalized a second time. I don't, I think it's good to be in there. Excuse me, please, please, let me, we're finished reading. Alright, okay. Have have a high-level work session meeting with the village of Mamaronek's Board of Trustees, including the other stakeholders, if the ace believes desirable. I would, I would love to, to highlight that, but, okay.
If you, if you want, you can say, leave out if the ace believes desirable.
No, I think we need that. I think we need to leave that in. Thank you.
D, in the, the middle line, monies from elevating.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you. Okay, good, good, good. From. Alright. Alright. Now, Peggy, did we miss anything else? Yes.
The period needs to be over one point. I would say it shouldn't have any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I move we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, we got a closer hearing. A difficult hearing? I don't know.
This is not a hearing. This is just a resolution.
I've lost control.
It's instructed to be a roll call.
Okay, let's do, let's do the roll call.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Trustees, Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee four?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the reason we did all these changes is because the way it was, I wasn't going to support it. And if it wasn't unanimous, it wasn't going to fly with the army corps. So that's why, that's why we have to compromise. And that's why nobody, nobody gets everything they want. Alright? Thank you.
Yeah. We'll keep going.
Alright.
You're now on four A.
Oh, I'm ready to go home.
You've got three more to do. I just emailed it to everybody to change it.
You're very patient.
Augie, really, you're terrific. Thank you very much.
Let me see your, your, your agenda. God bless Tom, he can, he can friggin' do this.
Oh, yeah. The first one. Lou, your next one is resolution establishing U-turn restriction on Mamaronek Avenue.
Okay, this is something, somebody called about this. This is a, yeah, Lori, this is the new business is resolution establishing a U-turn restriction on Mamaronek Avenue at the Villa Avenue intersection for addition to Village Code. Now, this is something that obviously members of the Traffic Commission. Robert, you're here. This, this, come on up, yeah. I'm I'm trying to remember. We talked about this, right?
I I don't think we talked about this last meeting, but this was talked about at a Traffic Commission meeting in twenty twenty. The, one of the reasons why it was not done at that point was because the the improvements to American, Mamaronek Avenue, still was in the planning stage.
Yeah.
It was supposed to be done in twenty twenty, then again in October twenty twenty-one, but I.
Okay, so if I remember correctly, and please correct me if I'm, I'm sure you will correct me. That that the, that the people making the left were concerned about that U-turn or?
And so the one we talked about at Traffic Commission, not the last meeting, but the meeting before that.
Okay.
Was it no. And this is, this is a different one. This is a.
But it's just down a little bit from it.
Yes, but.
Okay, okay.
It's correct. It was no, and American Avenue.
Okay.
And for no, with the, the, what had been requested was a no U-turn to prevent people who are going south to make the U-turn going north. This is actually for people going north, so they can't go south. So it's not the same.
Oh, I got it, got it, got it, got it. Alright, yeah, so I was turned around then.
Yeah.
So the the lady who called earlier, Lori, is she here?
She's here.
Hey, Lori, oh, yeah, yeah, let's, let's, Lori, first of all, why do we, why is this, what's the pro, what's the con on this?
So, well, let me just give you a little bit of context on this.
Yeah.
There was actually a letter that was submitted from then Lieutenant to lose and now Chief to lose that to the Traffic Commission from June twenty nineteen. And I can't read it for me. But basically, she ordered there to throw accidents at the location, most recently, June eighth, twenty nineteen. A general U-turn hit the gas pedal, set brake pedal, and struck parked vehicle, pushing the sidewalk. She noted approximately five people at the intersection. There's already established turn lane. Were vehicles concerned left to go onto Raleigh Road for make the U-turn to proceed south by Mamaronek. So that that was a recommendation that came from the police department that went to the Traffic Commission. It was considered by the Traffic Commission. They recommended that this be implemented. And we were working with the county to actuate that.
And this, so this is a police recommendation?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the pro. Lori, what's your reaction to that?
Well, my original question was whether they did any speed tracking at the beginning of the S curve and at the end of the S curve, because turning on Raleigh Road is right where you're supposed to slow down, or cars are supposed to slow down, but they don't. And a little bit further down the road at Villa, because they've gone already through the S curve. They are going a little bit slower, so making anybody turning, making a U-turn at Raleigh Road put some especially the person riding in the passenger seat in very serious danger. The speeds are too fast.
Alright, well, that's, that's a problem through that whole stretch, and I know the the village police are not shy about enforcing over there. I found out years ago, so. I don't know what.
The solution would be a traffic light at that U-turn.
We don't own that road, though, right?
No, no, well, the county owns, the county is responsible for the pavement and the the drain, the storm drainage. The village is responsible for everything else, so. If they were, that would be, if it was traffic, it would be a village traffic light. I I don't know if the, if the metrics would support the installation of traffic right there.
But that's a lot of, lot of money.
It's, you're talking a quarter of a million dollars for traffic. So I, and, you know, I don't know that.
What about the, what about some of these other traffic innovations we've had? I mean, I know that's a, that's a high-speed road. So is there, is there something that we could do to slow the traffic down?
Well, again, well, that's. Well, again, well, that's, maybe that's the county pavement, so.
Yeah, yeah.
They'd have to agree with that. I'm fairly confident they would agree with that.
In terms of the speeding, this, that's an enforcement issue.
That's correct.
Uh, and need to do more on enforcement. In terms of the the taking, making a U-turn from, you know, heading towards White Plains by Raleigh Road, if you will, there is a pull-off lane. You know, uh, there's, there's the equivalent of a third lane, if you will, that you can, you can pull over, so uh, traffic coming from behind from Mamaronek going, you know, towards White Plains, um, is not interrupted. Uh, doing that at the, uh, at Villa, you do not have that lane if I'm, if my memory serves me correctly.
That is correct.
Okay, so that, that gets to be a real, you know, problem in terms of, you know, stopping until traffic coming from White Plains and Harrison, you know, uh, breaks that you have an open area. You know, to make. You know, so, uh, you know, I, I can understand the logic of it. I think, uh, uh, Lori, your questions are fair. Um, but I think what we need is probably more enforcement. Uh, I do know that this flashing lights that before all of this instruction started on the bridge, you know, was being relatively effective of slowing traffic down that was going, continuing on Mamaronek Avenue, not the ones that were going up through a ramp.
Well, I, um, what's before us now is, 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 uh, and this is for you too, Lori, is for us to pass a, an ordinance to enable the enforcement of that U-turn. We're, we're signed, so, um, uh, it's, it's existence, we can, uh, address at a later time, but but if we put up a sign, we should be able to enforce.
The county, the county put up the sign.
Oh, okay.
But it, it was coordinated between the village.
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
It was requested.
I, so I think we're gonna have to pass this ordinance and then, uh, maybe kick this back to traffic and let them, let them, um, uh, let them look at, uh, the whole S curve situation, folks, what do you think?
That would have to be a possibility.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Because that S curve has been an issue for, for a long time. It, 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 it makes you wanna, you know, and when you come into it, you do, you want it, you want it useful to accelerate, so it's, uh.
But somewhat effectively reversed when you're coming from White Plains coming around that S. We, they, it's been there for years, where you have like the six or seven yellow arrows in the flashing lights that you're speeding. You might have to put that in the other lanes to bring, bring and slow us down a little bit.
And, and.
Possibility, like the other traffic possibilities again, and.
I, I think that, I think that's what we're gonna have to, I think we're, uh, look, Laura, I think we're gonna just have to look at the whole S curve and, uh, and, uh, and you're gonna have to live with that, uh, U-turn for a while.
We are going to have to die with it.
No, oh, I don't, please.
I'm sorry, that's the case.
With, so you. What?
It's dangerous.
Okay. Um, oh, we, we, we're trying to look, I mean, if the, 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 the U-turn is there um, and, uh, and we, we, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the whole stretch.
No U-turn.
What? What's no U-turn? Exactly, that's right, yeah. The no U-turn is there.
And so, so the people who live on those two streets are gonna have to go much farther.
To turn, turn around, yeah.
Because they have to get to the other side of Mamaronek Avenue.
Right, that's, um.
Or conversely, they're gonna drive into Villa. Pull U-turn on Villa and then turn left on Villa.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's an inconvenience, it, it is. All right.
Um, it's not the inconvenience, it's the speed. We're in danger because of the speed.
Well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we are going to, uh, ask the, the staff to talk to the, uh, police department and, and step up enforcement there as well.
But wait, so Lori, do you think that it's, that the no U-turns, that there should be no U-turn, that there should not be U-turns there?
I believe that the U-turn should remain where it is now because the people coming around the curve are going much slower at the end of the curve than they are at the beginning of the curve.
Or you're now gonna have to do the U-turn.
Where, correct. It's about one, it's about one hundred fifty feet from where people have to slow to make that turn. And they, you need to just look at it. Somebody needs to go there and look at it and see exactly how fast the speed that people are going when they hit that Raleigh Road U-turn.
All right, um, Lori, you have two members of the Traffic Commission here who've heard everything you said. Uh, we're all aware of it, um, we'll, um, it's on our radar. Um, I'm not sure we can, we can come to a resolution tonight that you're gonna be happy with, but, uh, we are looking at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so what do we do with this? We, uh, I, I think we've got to, uh.
You know, I don't know. I mean, I, maybe we want to send it back to the Traffic.
Will you email them? That's right here, you can change.
That's, that's incompatible.
Yes.
Uh, uh, Lori, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I mean, again, this request comes from the police department that there were.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to consider this, the police department request.
But, but clearly, we don't have, I mean, the, the neighbors who are up there didn't go to the Traffic Commission. There may be something else.
Well, I, I think so, we should look at it, but, but in the meantime, we need to, uh, put our team on our eye and, 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 uh, and, and, and put this in the, in the, in the books. That's what I, I mean, that's, that's the right thing to do. Yeah, so I think, I think we need to, uh, just for respect for, for the law, for the ability of the, of the police to do their job, um, uh, we need to pass that.
I, I, I'm pretty sure the, the police don't have a, a warning list of every single restriction that's promulgated in the code. They, they'll just tend to rely on the sign.
All right, the police are gonna get tickets and then people are gonna fight their tickets.
They're not gonna have a, a, a list of all the schedules.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, it's, that's what we want to encourage. Um, uh, uh, I would entertain an, a motion to, uh, to, uh, to pass that resolution.
You're, you're making that motion?
Um, I was gonna enter, oh, I guess I can make, I'll make the motion, sure, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, Augie, we call, we call the roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes, reluctantly.
The four?
Yes.
Okay, great, all right. So, but let's, let's, let's get on this, so we're not, um, just leaving a mistake there. All right, so, um, resident, next is res- resolution scheduling a public hearing, proposed law age of two, twenty twenty-two, a proposed local law regarding the use of, um, video conferencing to conduct meetings in the village of Mamaronek. Call the, call the roll, Augie.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Okay.
Got it.
Making motion?
Yes.
No, we have to, uh, we have to, we have to schedule the public hearing.
I thought that's what we just did.
Yeah.
Do we save a date?
Oh, no, we didn't.
No, so.
Was it public hearing?
So this, this, I mean, what we're doing now is two weeks from now on a, um, a law allowing us to video conference once the, um,
COVID emergency.
COVID emergency is lifted.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, so that's, uh, two weeks into their exciting public hearing, so there we go. All right, uh, next is.
Make sure we schedule the property, do we do?
Do we, do, do we schedule a property? What?
What do you say?
Yeah, okay, great. If you adopt the resolution, it's in the resolution.
Okay, um, next is communications to the board.
Before you get to. Communication board, I'd like to, uh, in work session, we, um, I'd like to make a motion to add a number four C, the FEMA resolution.
Um, yeah, yes, I'll second.
So I've made the motion, somebody needs to second it or not.
I second.
Dan, we've made a motion and it's been seconded, thank you.
Oral?
Trustees Young?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Uh, excuse me, which, which is the topic now? I couldn't hear well.
This is the FEMA resolution. That we worked on in work session to, uh, to bring it to a vote. So it's adding.
Yep, yep, now I, now I got it, yes.
All right. So, uh, let's, let's read this resolution.
Augie, can you put it up on the screen?
Please.
That's what we.
That Christie liaison and FEMA Chair Chairman will collaborate, coordinate with sponsors of the ACE project. There is always be, we'll work with the ACE. Right. Uh, this is a resolution, uh, the village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees suggests the village ma- suggests the village manager's office, along with FEMA trustee liaison and the FEMA chairman will collaborate and coordinate with the sponsors of the ACE project and that the village manager's office be responsible working with the ACE on all construction implementation activities. Um, okay, so it's a suggestion from the board. That's it.
Second. Call the roll. Trustees Young?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four? Oh, I'm surprised. We, we. Trustee to four?
Back there.
He's on twice.
Trustee to four? Victor, can you hear us? He'll be back in a minute. Victor, he's back on. There he is.
Yeah, here I am.
Okay, dude. It was a roll call, trustee to four, uh, for the, uh, FEMA resolution. Uh, I ran roll call and it's up to you now.
You want to vote for or against it, Victor?
Yes, no, I'm in favor. I'm sorry, I lost, I lost connection.
CB two.
Communications from the board, are they? What, it's eleven fifteen?
Uh, let's go quick. Um, Mamaronek's been, uh, passing tax, uh, tax priorities yet I don't see them over here in the village. Uh, when, when are we gonna start to act on the, uh, tax priorities that are actually passed by the town of Mamaronek? I think we got about forty-five thousand dollars there. And then in December, directors here of Mamaronek had a huge tax priority. We, uh, voted on accepting, uh, the villagers of Mamaronek, uh, defended. But, um, the town also settled on it, and I never saw the village of Mamaronek um, any resolution on what the, what our total was for the second half of what we would owe directors if we owe anything at all. And that's something that would have to be a phone call to the town of Rye. Do we any, owe any money, uh, in refunds to directors for the years that be, I believe it's two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-one? Second. Where are we with, um, the village hall repairs? I, I know we spent about four hundred thousand. Are, are we, uh, the, the spending has slowed down? Are, are we doing studies? Are we dealing with the old? You know, have we done most of the repairs? Are we preparing another large indoor repair? Does anybody know? If so, you can report at the next meeting. How far along, because we, we, I, we put two million towards the job and how much, how much more does it look like, uh, we need to get done there? Dog signs. We have dog signs outside of Harbor Island that say you can run your dog on the leash only from five AM to seven AM or something. As far as I know, the resolution was passed, you can bring your dog on a leash at any time within the harbor. So can we get rid of all those dog signs? There's about four of them on the, also both one and one at the entrance of Harbor Island. And also no picnicking. I have no idea what no picnicking means, but it means no eating food. It, it's a joke. Harbor Island's got four food trucks, two ice cream trucks, a food stand on the outside, and we allow catering uh, when you rent the deck. So I, I think the no picnic, no barbecuing, understand, no picnicking. I, I can go over and ask the park ranger right now, and he cannot tell me what the definition of picnic is. So it's just, it's just useless sign out there. All right. Uh, you mentioned again that we're not just gonna be dredging this year, but you also look to do dredging again next year. Again, that's another one point three five million dollars.
I don't know that, I, I don't know that it's gonna be that much. I mean, I don't suspect, I suspect making up for a decades of neglect will not be the, the same as just taking care of a year's worth of, uh, stuff, but at some point it will, you know, be reduced, I would imagine.
Yeah, but the bottom line again is none, none of, none of that is, is budgeted. If you're gonna do annual, the annual dredging again, it's something that's gonna affect the, uh, the operating budget. If you actually did one point three five billion, that would be five percent against what housing.
Glenn, it's our job, we gotta.
Against all taxes.
We gotta do it, we gotta figure it out.
I, I know that, but you, you, you keep spending money. But it says, I, I got three pages of spending that the village has done, that doesn't, most of it doesn't have funding. And eventually it has to be paid for.
Glenn, Glenn, this isn't a business, it's a government, it's, it's a service.
Yeah, and the government has to pay their bills too. I mean, if you tell the taxpayers, look, we're gonna have to raise your taxes six percent, that's fine. You know, there, there's other things that, you know, every, every source of income has to be looked at. And it has to be planned out.
We're looking at that, we're looking at that, we're looking at alternate, alternate re- uh, revenue streams, uh, a number of things, but, uh, picking, picking out individual things and saying they're expensive is, is, uh, is easy to do.
I'm, I'm just saying in the aggregate. Okay, um, height restrictions. Here, again, I've asked this at probably a dozen meetings for the people in the flats, Washingtonville, in the flood zone. Can we, can we raise the height limitations on all flood properties fifteen feet to at least give the homeowners a chance to get out of the flood zone?
That's a great idea, thank you, thank you, ti- time, that's timed, but.
Okay, thank you.
We want to end while it's still today.
All, all good points.
All right, uh, oh, God. Keep forgetting I'm running the meeting.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, report for the manager, he's not here, so.
Yes, he is.
So, um, first, uh, this is from Jerry. Uh, in the next few months, we give one of the several lucky municipalities take advantage of a large part of money. Four point two billion offered in the, the state budget, including that money for municipalities approved is the following. Uh, not less than one hundred million dollars for climate adaptation and mitigation projects. Well, and protection to just lower rise storm surge funding, uh, flood risk reduction projects. Uh, land acquisition for flood mitigation and coastal recovery and resiliency. Urban forestry, food structures and habitat restoration. Uh, and here's another one that we had talked about earlier. Two hundred fifty million for purchasing properties identified as at risk to flooding for women's towers for flood risk reduction projects.
So those are all, all pots of money that we expect to be in the, the, the statewide, uh, bond issue. Which despite whatever we were talking about today, and despite the fact that, that my name is on the ballot in November, that's the most important damn thing on the ballot, uh, in November. my name is on the ballot in November, that's the most important damn thing on the ballot uh in November uh to pass, because that passes and that'll bring money here and that will affect your property taxes, the 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 things that we could, that we have to do that we won't necessarily have to pay for, so that is that is by far the most important thing on the ballot this November for us.
Just uh I mentioned earlier, we're beginning spraying tomorrow morning in certain areas of Shore Acres. There was a call that went out and I can follow with the post on the website. Uh file for the record, the memorandum agreement with the PVA for the collective bargaining agreement. And off the record, the amendment for the joint bargaining agreement for the VVA just because.
And this and 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 the collective bargaining agreement is is they're just their contract, it's not the not the other thing.
No, it's it's the update to their current. We'll draft a new contract.
Dan, there was discussion earlier about a trailer that is owned by the village that is in Columbus Park. They're on wheels.
Jefferson lot.
Jefferson Avenue.
It's got a flag on it, it's right by my house.
It it's it's in the floodway.
More accurately.
And it's not, you can't have them in the floodway, we've had so. So.
The big the big lot was small.
Small.
By by the basketball court.
Okay.
Okay, uh along Jefferson Avenue, it 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 should be moved, I understand in the emails that I read today that Jerry approved it, but there's no discussion as to why. Uh but it it's a it's not in compliance with either ours or the DEC's laws, so we need to uh address that.
We don't know why it's there or what what it's there for, we don't know that it has to be moved because we don't know why it's there, and it hasn't been there that long. So um.
About a week.
It's it's been there for a week.
All right, you know, it it's a lot, there are vehicles that are there all the time. It's not good, I mean, I don't want to hear all.
Not moved, it's being left there, so the question is, why is it being left there?
That's the question, let's get the question answered, why is it there?
Nice if you don't interrupt, thank you.
We would directing it needs to be moved. You can't do that.
We can do that if we if the board so chooses. But it the question is, it's in violation of of our village law and it's violation of DEC laws, the question is why? And why can't we have that moved? Okay?
It it well, the the question is, why is it there? Is it in violation? And uh and and this, what's it doing there and and why was it approved, that's all, that's all. Just you you question, answer those questions. There's there's been no determination of that it's a any any uh there's any issue involved with it at all.
In in an email today, there was also a indication of trying to say that truck loading would only be off-street parking in the Washingtonville area on old Boston Post Road. I'm not sure whether that's the best answer or the. Not I'm not all all close, uh all Amerenek, all Amerenek Road.
It's all, yes.
Okay, where the padegos are and, you know.
That's the pay park.
In the the pay park area. And my my concern is, have we talked with the merchants to try and work this out as opposed to just giving a meeting? Because we have that problem in other areas of the village and what's fair, what one needs to be fair for the others, so I appreciate some feedback on that as well. I I understand, you just, you know, Jerry's not here unfortunately. Um and uh we talked about getting a timeline on municipality and we still do not have it and that's well overdue, so we need to get that done into the board, okay?
All right. Report from the clerk treasurer.
There's one one last thing, we understand in emails that we're sent Jerry answers to the FEMA questions, but it's not been distributed to FEMA, so see if we can get that done.
Yeah, I I I was not copying it.
Yeah, I understand, I I'm not suggesting, nothing's nefarious, but.
No, no, I I don't know if an email has been or has not.
All right.
Oh, oh, no, that's what the chorus said, emails to uh to FEMA.
All right, um re- report, uh you finished? No, it's we're talking to the.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, report from the clerk treasurer.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, we have the resignation of a tree committee member, Ellen Axelrod.
Okay.
That is all.
Sorry, it's your goal. Report from the village attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Um minutes commissioners, boards committees, minutes to the board of trustees, work session, regular meeting of June twenty-seventh and revised minutes of the work session of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, minutes of the flood mitigation advisory committee meeting of May twenty-fourth twenty twenty-two, May twenty-fourth, um minutes of the planning board meeting of June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, minutes of the tree committee meeting, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the committee for the environment meeting of March fifteenth, April twenty-seventh and June twenty-first, okay, um motion to approve?
See for the record.
Oh, receive for the record, okay, great, received for the record, I never did read the uh the uh the emails from the uh from those committee members, but that's okay. Uh and um motion to adjourn.
Yeah, talk about the fireworks.
So move.
I'll go second.
All 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 in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you, thank you, Victor. Hope it's warm where you are.
Cause it's warm here.
It was more than requested, the environmental committee, normally it's at the end of the white area. Put a normal store, that's part of the break and everything, so that uh and the fire carnival, so it's usually at the end of. Because it was right next to the river.
We got stuff done today, although I don't know.